All right, good evening, everybody. This meeting of the Board of Education for November 15th, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. The meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services' website and on Channel 28, and it will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. And in my script, it says Director Green is joining us virtually this evening, but I actually believe he was pulled away on a family emergency, so he will not be joining us tonight. Before we get started, I just want to share a few reminders for everyone. We ask that those who are attending the meeting tonight, whether it's members of the public, staff, or ourselves as board members, treat each other with respect. We're really excited that you've taken time out of your day to get involved in our school district, whether it's to testify or just observe the proceedings here tonight. And I really believe that our ability to do this civilly is something that makes our community stronger. If you wish to display signs or banners, please remain in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area and just make sure you're not blocking any other attendees' views of the proceedings. And for safety reasons, we also need to keep the walkways and aisles clear. And in general, just would appreciate it if everyone in the room can be mindful of others and remember that we are setting an example for our community's children tonight. Our first item on our agenda tonight is a resolution to recognize November as National Native American Heritage Month. We want to acknowledge that today the month is already half over, or more than half over, but as this is our first meeting of the month, we're now acknowledging this in a board meeting. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this resolution?
Yes, I would. Good evening, Directors. Thank you, Chair Scott. This is actually a great opportunity because I don't think she's had the pleasure of being in front of the Board in her new capacity as Director of the Title VI Indian Education Program. That is Jillian Muir, who I'm going to ask to come up here to share about our current work that's happening in the Indian Education Program. Great to see you, Jillian.
Thank you. My name is Jillian. I'm Walla Walla, Dakota, and American European, and I'm the Director of Indian Education here at PPS. Our currently program currently serves approximately 430 American Indian, Alaskan Native students, and our program's growing every day. Although data across the board shows that the district is not meeting the needs of our Native American students, the data also shows the students who are enrolled in our program do better and have better educational outcomes than those who are not, including better attendance, lower disciplinary referrals, and better math and reading scores. With that being said, I would like to thank the Board and the Superintendent for your commitment to Indian education. Among many other things, our program is able to provide cultural enrichment opportunities to our students to help them feel connected to their culture in this large urban setting that we have here in Portland. Our dedicated student advocates and our community agent work hard to meet with as many students as possible, not only going to schools to meet and hold space in small groups, but also by supporting students and families with one-to-one support as needed. We help support the Native Montessori Classroom at Fabian, which is taught by the highly dedicated and skilled teacher, Carrie, as well as support the Native Head Start Classroom at Applegate. And our staff also provide cultural lessons and support to classroom teachers across the district who request it. And today, I am joined by two of our current Indian Ed students, as well as the Chairperson, Desiree Rodriguez, and Vice Chair Tamara Brown, who serve on the Indian Parent Committee. The Vice Chair Tamara, as well as myself, are former Indian Ed students, and our program has a long history of serving Native students in the Portland area, and we look forward to being able to serve for many more years to come. PPS has many Native employees, and I want to give a shout-out to their dedication as well. We know that we're stronger when we work together. And in ending, I want to thank the Board for proclaiming November as Native American Heritage Month, and I urge all Portland Public Staff to celebrate the culture heritage and economic contributions of Native Americans to our Oregon and the United States all the time. It's not enough to see representation only one time a month. Our students deserve to see representation every day and all the time. [In NASHWANISHA].
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6607?
So moved.
Director, to pass moves. Director Brim Edwards, seconds. And we're going to go ahead and read the resolution in a second. Is there any board discussion before we do that?
I'd just love to learn at some point by email about what your strategies are for reaching out to families and getting more of our Native children to enroll in the Indian Ed program.
Absolutely.
Love to hear more about that.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment, Ms. Bradshaw?
There's not.
Okay, great. Student Representative McMahon, would you please read tonight's resolution?
Yes. So I've been asked to read the recitals of this resolution. I'll be reading it full. A) Recitals: Native American Indians are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. The Portland metro region rests on the traditional lands of the bands of Chinook, Multnomah, Clackamas, Tualatin, Malala, Kalapuya, Wasco, Cowlets, and the Kalamet tribes. These tribes established their communities in a resource-rich area where traded and fishing along the rivers and harvesting those natural resources that fed and maintained their families. In the 1950s, under the federal reallocation policy, a large segment of the Native population in the U.S. was forced to reallocate or relocate to several major cities, of which Portland was one. This has added to the diversity of tribal representation in the region. Portland boasts of one of the largest and most diverse urban Native American populations in the U.S. The history of Native American Indians is rich, with those who positively influence and enrich our nation, our society, our region, our state, and our schools through their entrepreneurship, commitment to community service, deep value of justice and liberty, and social and cultural life. On August 3rd, 1990, President of the United States, George W. Bush, declared the month of November as the National American Native Heritage Month, thereafter commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month. Native American Indians have made profound contributions and continue to make advances in education, medicine, art, culture, and public service, and have been a consistent and vital influence in our nation's growth and prosperity. The Portland metro area's Native American Indian community is diverse and growing with the population established to nearly 70,000. As Oregon is a relocation site, PPS students represent more than 150 tribal nations. As such, we are humbled by Native American Indian employees, families, and communities who contribute to the accomplishment of PPS's mission. Understanding Native American Indian history is an important part of celebrating Native American Heritage Month. The Oregon Indian Education Association introduced an Oregon Governor Brown signed into law Senate Bill 13: Tribal History and Shared History in the 2017 Legislative Session. This bill called upon the Oregon Department of Education to develop a statewide curriculum related to the Native American experience in Oregon, including tribal history, tribal sovereignty, culture, treaty rights, government, socioeconomic experiences, and current events. Tribal History and Shared History is one of the 11 objectives identified in the ODE's American Indian Alaskan-- sorry, Alaskan Native State Plan, in which every school district in Oregon implements historically accurate, culturally embedded, place-based, contemporary, and developing appropriate American Indian curriculum. Oregon is now is one of several states adopting similar efforts to reaffirm the state's commitment to preserving tribal cultural integrity and the education of our citizens. In May 2018, the ODE facilitated coordination of the creation of the Essential Understanding of Oregon's American Indians, which has been used to develop American Indian curriculum and assessment tools for the 4th, 8th, and 10th grades aligning with state standards in the following content areas: English Language Arts, Science, Math, Social Studies, and Physical Education and Health. Portland Public Schools' Office of Indian Education, Office of Teaching and Learning, and Office of Schools are engaged in this vital statewide work. As of January 2020, the State of Oregon requires implementation for the tribal history and shared history within all K-12 school districts throughout the state. The Office of Schools and the Office of Teaching and Learning will support-- will work together to support the implementation of this K-12 curriculum as foundational and fundamental elements of our culturally responsive teaching and learning for students in Portland Public Schools. Portland Public Schools has a racial equity and racial education equity policy-- I apologize-- that states our persistence to affirmably overcoming the educational barriers that have resulted in a persistent unacceptable achievement gap for Black and Native students, and to give each student the opportunity and the support to meet his or her highest potential-- or their highest potential. Just add that. Choosing to close opportunity gaps while raising achievement for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and all district staff. The Portland Public School-- excuse me-- Board of Education believes every-- each and every student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the district's vibrant contributions-- this is long, I'm sorry-- made by shared cultures, languages, ideas, beliefs, and values within our school community. Tonight, we are celebrating Native American students. Resolved. The United States-- The Portland Public School Board of Education hereby promises November 1st through November 30th as Native American Indian Heritage Month, and encourages staff, students, and community members to observe and recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage, and economic contributions of Native Americans to our Oregon and the United States through culturally relative activities, and to learn from the past and understand the experience that we have shaped-- that has shaped the United States. The Superintendent or his designee shall work with all schools in the district to recognize Native American Indian Heritage Month through culturally relevant lessons and activities in November and throughout the school year. Thank you.
You'll be saying the United States proclaims when you're President of the Senate or Speaker of the House?
That's exactly right.
And I apologize for all the mistakes. I'm like--
No, that was great. Thank you, Representative McMahon.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity to read that out. I really appreciate it, and it's just very, very important, and I'm so glad that we are recognizing it as a school district.
And Chair Scott, I can't make the formal friendly amendment, but I'd like to suggest something our student rep suggested, a more inclusive pronoun in recital "I" to meet their highest potential, please.
Yep. It was a good catch on the fly, and I think one that we will make for sure. Thank you very much for reading that. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6607, proclaiming the celebration of National Native American Indian Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? Great. Resolution 6607 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda tonight is Resolution to Recognize November 8th through 12th as National School Psychology Week. Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6606?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstant moves. Director Brim Edwards, seconds. Is there any board discussion? And anything Student Representative McMahon you'd like to say on this? Was that a no?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I think, as we've talked about many times here, that as we look at mental health care and sort of where our students are, the really important pieces that staff who care for students' social and mental health do. And so I think as we, you know, look at the school psychs and the amazing work they do and the difference that it makes, I think we all know that it's so key to our students' success and their ability to heal from the pandemic and navigate this difficult world, tumultuous world we find ourselves in these days.
Totally agree, and also I think we need to be vigilant about protecting our resources and our sources of support for our school psychologists and other mental health supports in our school. You know, we have our Student Success Act dollars, and it was, you know, the number-one concern that was raised around the state about how that money should be utilized, so hopefully that stream continues and that use is prioritized. And then with our ESER money, that we know that will go away, and we're also using some of that to support mental health needs. So we need to be prepared in the future to figure out how we're going to continue these investments.
I was going to add that we have the Ballmer Institute now that's developing a pipeline for our school psychologists, and I am really looking forward to seeing the throughput there.
And Chair Scott, we do have a senior staff prepared to just say a few words to recognize our school psychologists as well, so if--
Great, wonderful.
--now's a good time. We do have, filling in as our Director of Special Education, Michelle Muir, here with us. I think it's also her first time in front of the Board as well, in this new capacity.
Yes, it is. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Scott, and Board Directors, Super Guerrero, and our Student Representative McMahon. Now more than ever, we are so grateful for the individual and collective work that school psychologists have done in support of students, families, and school communities. The school psychologists support students accessing core instruction in many ways, including providing social, emotional, and mental health supports, providing expertise and collaborating with others in the areas of suicide prevention, behavioral safety planning, functional behavior assessments, counseling, care coordination, and providing assessment and recommendations regarding special education eligibility. Currently, the majority of the work that they do is coordinating the eligibility process for students with disabilities and providing those supports that I just mentioned for students with disabilities. However, we also have a comprehensive school psychologist program in seven of our schools. It's an innovative program that was begun a few years ago where they not only provide special education services and eligibility, they also do the preemptive work in the hopes of keeping students from being referred to special education and providing those services to all students instead of just students with disabilities. In that effort, they've helped to increase that implementation of those multi-tier systems and supports that we have for students, as well as disrupted the racially and linguistically disproportionate special ed referrals in the schools in which they work, which is schools that are both TSI and/or CSI schools and some of our most underserved populations. It's our hope to continue to grow this comprehensive school psychologist program, and we are really grateful for your continued support in doing so.
For all the reasons Ms. Muir just listed, this month during a time of gratitude, I also want to add my appreciation for the critical role that our school psychologists play in our school communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on this resolution?
No.
Okay. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6606 to Recognize November 8th through 12th, 2022, as National School Psychology Week. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Any abstentions? Resolution 6606 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Wait, that was in there twice. Apologies. But you can vote twice if you want. We're only going to count it once, but-- Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Moving on, the Board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. First, Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion or questions?
Are you moving Resolution 66--
Yeah, here you are.
Are you moving Resolution 6616 off the consent agenda?
It already has been separated out in the board book and separated.
Do I-- and we can actually-- this is something that I think has been a little bit unclear. Just to clarify, so we will-- we ask for things to be pulled, then we'll do a motion and a second, and then we'll have a chance for board discussion on the agenda, so just so we can do that going forward. So let's get the motion on the table. Since there's nothing needs to be removed, need a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Hollins, seconds. Now, is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? Vice Chair Hollins?
Yeah, so I have two things. One, again, of course, I'm going to highlight the fact that we have $11.2 million in contracts, and there's no certified businesses on here. So I just wanted us to really start taking a look at that more closely. And as a Board, I think we need to really look for our Superintendent to make sure that that starts being a priority for PPS, because as we know, you know, when we are participating in the economic fruits of PPS, then our community, then our family takes part of that as well. So I wanted to just make a note of that again. And I had a question on 6611. I love to have the equity field trip percentage on here. Does that mean we're not giving anything on that, or-- because that's the first time I've seen that on the field trip piece.
Hello. Hi, Director.
Good evening.
Good evening, Directors, and Chair, Vice Chair, and Student Representative. Let me-- I want to make sure I hear your question so I can respond.
Yeah, I noticed that on the other end were all campus activities, they had a section in here for equity field trips fund. So I just wanted to know, did the NA mean we did not give any funds? Or is that just like the-- like, what did that mean? Because this is the first time I've seen it on here, so.
Correct. So it may mean that for this process, there was not a need based on the funding source to dip into the equity fund for this particular field trip.
And Director Hollins, this was an addition to the form based on the Policy Committee discussion, so that's where it came from.
Yeah.
I do appreciate it on there, though. This is great information.
Yeah, just so you know that it doesn't-- So we're not dipping in, and you could see that-- you could see spaces where it's dipped.
I also wanted to make a comment about the contracts, because of course, I look at that every time, too, and I didn't do the math this time because I was rushed when I was going over the materials. But I mean, we need to reflect the community's entire contributions by hiring people that are women-owned and minority-owned businesses specifically, and I was noticing when I was looking through the materials today that there were some potential-- there's some opportunity there in some of our contracts to do a little bit more searching and find out if we can-- well, first of all, if they're certified at all, I was wondering. And also, I think we just-- we need to do-- I think we're going to fill that position, but we do need to be very, very intentional about where we spend our dollars. I was going to add to that, that I'm wondering if it would be possible, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, everyone, but if we could get a quarterly update on the spend in minority contracting communities, so we are tracking-- we're tracking the dollars.
I think--
In other words, if we have $11 million in contract, I mean, ideally, we would see, you know, 20% of that spent in minority and women-owned business communities.
Certainly. I'm hearing loud and clear. Our COO, Dan Young, is here as well. I think the Board's familiar with annually, we report out a percentage goal that we certainly are striving for for certified businesses. You think you'll see something similar for our equity fund as well.
But we can also see that in the quarterly reports that go to the Bond Accountability Committee. The issue is that we've always struggled with, is that even when we meet our aspirational goals, which we have in the past or we come close to, it tends to be from a few larger firms rather than really spreading the opportunity as widely. So, you know, that's a conversation that's always worth having. What are we doing to cultivate those opportunities, to help train people, to reach out? But you can see that in the-- we don't get the reports anymore direct to the Board, but we get the documents.
Right.
I was going to add, my two years of fellowship in School Board Partners has introduced me to a whole range of minority-owned businesses of every type that touch education, from consultants to, you know, curriculum providers to, I mean, some of the services that we use here. And if there's some way I can help by making introduction to that world of minority-owned businesses that work in education, I would love to be that bridge.
Sure. When the time's appropriate, can certainly share the outreach I've also been doing along with either our CFO or COO to encourage, be present at their gatherings of the various organizations here locally and in the region to try to encourage, support, application processes, et cetera. So I think you'll learn, we're trying to make a concerted effort there.
Great. Any other board discussion before we move to a vote?
I'm just going to say that I'm going to be abstaining from the consent agenda vote tonight because my daughter is going on the Cleveland High School band trip.
Great. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6608 through 6615 and 6619. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to one with Student Representative-- sorry, by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative McMahon unofficially voting yes. And one abstention. Did I get the math right? I got the math right. Thank you. We turned now to student and public comment. Before we begin, I do just want to quickly review our guidelines for public comment. First, thank you very much for taking the time to attend a meeting tonight and providing your comment. Public input informs and improves our work as a Board. We look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns tonight. Our Board Office may follow up on any board-related issues that are raised or in public testimony. We do request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the Superintendent's Office to be dealt with as a personnel matter. And if you have any additional materials or items that you'd like to provide to the Board or to the Superintendent, we would ask that you email them to publiccomment@ppss.net. Again, publiccomment@ppss.net. When you begin your comments, please clearly state your name and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, at which point we would appreciate if you could wrap up your thoughts. With that, Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
We do. Rachel Haggerty-Hall.
Thank you for being here. And also, I didn't say the-- we'll start the timer, there'll be a green light for most of it. It'll switch to yellow when you have about 30 seconds left, and then red when the time is up. It does not matter, either one, and thank you very much for being here tonight. And feel free to start whenever you are ready.
I think I was told I say my name first and then you start the time. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so, my name is Rachel Haggerty-Hall, and I guess I'm ready.
You're good to go.
I'm good to go.
Yeah.
I did this last time. Good evening. I am here to give my perspective on how Portland Public Schools' special education administrators have begun cynically spinning the concept of inclusion in order to justify severely limiting the provision of a continuum of services for special education students in PPS. I'm here tonight to talk specifically about the negative effects that eliminating or reducing the number of social, emotional-focused classes in the district would have on every single student in the district, including my child. SES-focused classes serve the students whose behaviors mean they need a setting with fewer students and more adult support. These are students whose behaviors impact their own and others' ability to access learning. My child was born with brain differences that have caused her to have behavioral challenges since she was 18 months old. She qualified for special education as a three-year-old and has multiple medical diagnoses that cause her behavioral challenges. In the first grade, she was sent home and suspended on multiple occasions, thus being denied her right to an education. In fact, she attended four schools, including several months at Pioneer during first grade. After things began to turn around for her at Pioneer, she began attending Buckman with a social, emotional-focused class placement. And this is when my child's true breakthrough happened. The staff had a plan to slowly and thoughtfully integrate her into general education classes. Over time, she began to spend more and more time in general education, but could always get support from focus class staff when she needed it. Some of you may have déjà vu, be feeling déjà vu regarding this issue. Five years ago, I sat before you and explained the need for a variety of educational settings for students when the district was attempting to dismantle Pioneer. The Board members who were serving at that time, including several of you, had the opportunity to do the right thing and push back against the plan to dismantle Pioneer, but did not do so. Once again, PPS's Communications Department is trotting out the same false narrative and disingenuous use of the word "inclusion" that they used when they argued for dismantling Pioneer, suggesting that people who are not the parents of children with special needs and people who do not work in schools with direct student contact somehow know more about what children need than their parents and educators. How insulting. Have some respect for intelligence and be honest. Financial resources are limited, and an expedient way to balance the books is to limit special education options in the name of inclusion. If you decide to approve a cost-saving plan, don't pretend that this is what's better for kids. If you decide to approve a cost-saving plan, don't pretend that this is what's better for kids. Children with social emotional disorders who are not properly supported can and do disrupt the education of all students in a class or a building. This is devastating for the child with disabilities, whose needs are not being met. It's devastating for the children who are continually, who continually miss out on their legally mandated services because special education teachers are called to deal with emergency situations. And it's devastating for the children who just want to feel safe and learn in their classrooms. Board members, I urge you to ask hard questions about motivation, money and staffing. This district has made bad decisions in the past, CK eight schools, that have taken years to undo. Please don't make the mistake of naively trusting those who prefer to know more about students' needs than their parents and teachers. Listen to parents, listen to teachers, use your critical thinking skills and maintain a continuum of support for special education. That is true inclusion.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you for your time, I really do appreciate it.
Nora Layman.
Nope, either one is fine. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, nice to be here tonight. Uh, my name's Nora Layman and I'm a parent volunteer with Families for Climate and a mom of a first grader at Scott Elementary. Go Scotties. And I'm speaking tonight because I'm frustrated, um, that a methane heating system is still included in the Benson reconstruction and no one seems willing to do what it takes to get fossil fuels out of the new building now, rather than planning for yet another retrofit down the road. In April twenty of twenty, April twenty twenty-one, PPS high school students first testified before county commissioners about the connection between childhood asthma and gas cook stoves. And last week, Multnomah County Public Health Department issued a new report warning about the health hazards from burning methane gas indoors. To protect public health, improve air quality at homes and mitigate climate change, this report recommends switching out gas stoves and other gas burning appliances like furnaces with electric appliances at time of replacement. Those students helped strike a match that is about to change regional policy for the better. We need to stay clear on the facts. At this late hour in the world's remaining carbon budget, there is no safe level of climate warming gases left to emit. PPS cannot wave away investing in a methane heating system for Benson High by saying that the district will still get to net zero by twenty forty. PPS's carbon neutrality goal may be eighteen years out, but the district will need to work very hard to get there in time. And it's critical that everyone involved be willing to face up to mistakes along the way and model them transparently as learning opportunities for our whole community. System change is hard. But every delay and misstep to remove fossil fuels from our buildings, transportation and landscapes has a price. Lives lost and diminished, both here in Portland and in less resourced, less adaptable countries around the globe. If PPS remains unwilling to re-engineer Benson's methane heating system, we strongly encourage the district to revisit the plans and at minimum, identify all electrification opportunities that are construction schedule neutral. An important example, will the Benson kitchen be all-electric? PPS should ensure that children and staff are not exposed to benzene, nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, formaldehyde and other health hazards that are well documented to be emitted by gas ranges. Whether it's the culinary arts, instructional facilities in high schools or any of the dozens of kitchens operated by nutrition services around the district, it's time to make a plan to align these facilities with the most recent public health guidance from the county, which states, quote, "Our review of the most recent scientific literature found conclusively that gas stoves are a health hazard, especially for children with growing lungs. To protect against pollution-driven respiratory problems, we recommend a transition away from combusting appliances in favor of healthy electric alternatives whenever possible," end quote. In conclusion, I'm not a construction project manager, but I can tell you this. I don't think PPS should separate its financial decisions from our kids' health and long-term survival. There must be data and analysis that include them from the beginning. The choice to put gas into Benson was done in a vacuum based on upfront capital costs and not long-term system operation costs and long-term human costs. There was no cost-benefit study. We can't let that happen again. Our kids are counting on us to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, and also just to say really quickly, I really appreciate the, um, suggestions about looking at, um, some of the existing things that are, as you put it, um, construction project neutral. Um, so I'm actually going to ask Vice Chair Hollins at the next Facilities and Operations Committee to, I think, pose that question to staff and see what we can do. So thank you for your testimony tonight.
Corinne Rasmussen.
Hi, my name's Corinne Rasmussen, R A S M U S S E N. I am speaking here tonight to advocate for Bridger's community needs while also offering a perspective on the initial stages of the SEGC implementation as it relates to Bridger Elementary School. On May twenty-fourth, this board adopted resolution sixty-five thirteen, which results in Bridger Elementary undergoing profound changes. Our Spanish DLI students will be joining the Lent community and our neighborhood program as it exists today will disband, replaced by Creative Science moving into the current Bridger site. This resolution was heartbreaking for our community, but we understand that change is hard and we wholeheartedly support change that will lead to equitable programs and outcomes for our BIPOC and all students across Southeast Portland. So what has happened since then? There have been two forums at Bridger where district staff have come to answer questions and address our concerns. Their first was held on September twenty-first and a majority of DLI families in attendance said they could not commit to attending Lent next year without detailed information on transportation and childcare. No detailed commitments or transportation were available despite the resolution that y'all signed, including language that transportation to Lent from Bridger Elementary neighborhood students would be provided. Similarly, similarly, no information on childcare was given. Families were told that Lent has a sun program. Sun is not childcare. It is not available five days a week, before or after school, or even year round. There's a break between sessions and this leaves working families without a viable solution. At the next forum on October twenty-first, Bridger families again raised the same concerns and still received no updates. To this day, we still do not know if there will be a bus, where and when it will pick up or drop off, or how many years of busing will be guaranteed, or whether or not families will have adequate before and after care options for their children. We are quickly, quickly approaching transfer deadlines and the district needs to provide this information before parents are expected to make a decision. We have been clear about the information that families need to plans for this transition. These are families that value the DLI program and want to stick with it. However, nobody chooses the mystery door when it comes to their child's education. Without answers, attrition from DLI will accelerate, and let's be frank, who's leaving? It's predominantly white families for whom a DLI education is a choice, not the Spanish-speaking families for whom this program was built for to benefit and close historic educational gaps. This is systemic racism and the direct consequence of this district's failure to plan for the transition. PPS is putting Southeast Spanish DLI program in jeopardy with a seeming lack of urgency and transparency around these simple requests. Part of the district's mission for SEGC was to create a robust whole-school DLI program and without providing these aforementioned supports, this laudable goal is at risk. Our third primary concern from our community is overcrowding when Creative Science moves into Bridger next year. Parents have been asking the district to share forecasted enrollment, which includes projections on neighborhood DLI students and current fifth graders choosing to stay. Please be transparent and share those projections with us. It has been nearly six months since the resolution passed and Bridger families have received no additional information or commitments from the district on the three areas consistently highlighted as top priorities, transportation, childcare and overcrowding. We are asking that clear, specific details and commitments about transportation and childcare at Lent and projected enrollment at CSS at Bridger be provided to families by December fifteenth. Throughout this process, Bridger has been a patient and collaborative partner and agreed to these drastic changes. We believed in good faith that the district would implement the changes responsibly. Now the Bridger community is being asked to commit to schools next year without certainty on how our children will get to school, who will care for them before and after school.
Ms. Rasmussen, could you?
I'm almost done.
Thank you.
And it's Dr. Rasmussen, by the way. If the school building will be woefully overcrowded, we ask that you approach this situation as if this were your own child and work with us to get the information we need by December fifteenth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Rasmussen.
Alyssa Potaznik.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Alyssa Potaznik, that's P O T A S Z N I K. You pronounced it perfectly. Good evening, my name is Alyssa Potaznik. I've taught special education in Texas and California for the past twelve years. Last year, I was the Special Education Department Chair for my campus in Austin and was voted Teacher of the Year. I cared deeply about public education and special education in particular. I have fought my entire career with students, for students with disabilities and their families, and my work reflects that. I began working for PPS in August. By September, I was desperately looking for another job. When I told people I would be working for PPS and they told me how bad it was, I would reply, "There is no possible way it can be as bad as it was in Texas," and I was laughably wrong. I cannot hope to summarize the multitude of issues with special education in PPS in three minutes, but I will do my best. Under the guise of inclusion and equity, my campus does not have self-contained classrooms beyond an ISC class for students whose academic needs cannot be met in the general education classroom. Special education encompasses a continuum of services. PPS has not properly resourced this continuum and so students are not actually being served in their least restrictive environment. In addition, a critical lack of staffing ensures that these students are marginalized and left behind. Sticking a student with disabilities in a general education classroom without the proper staffing and supports is not inclusion. It is not the LRE and it is not a free, appropriate public education. As a result, students who need greater support are left to flounder and one of two things happens. Either their behaviors are so extreme as to create an unsafe environment for themselves and their classmates, or they withdraw. They stop coming to class, they stop trying completely. Eventually, they might be placed in a program on another campus, which is even more restrictive than if they had had access to resource classes to begin with. Add in the attempts to change the contract to further affect this continuum, the lack of department chairs, the complete disconnect between district admin and what's happening on the campus level, as well as a completely untenable caseload size, and it is no wonder that sped teachers are leaving the district en masse. What angers me the most about all of this is that it's done under the guise of diversity and inclusion and equity. As always, when poor systems like this are put into place, it hurts our most marginalized students, our low-income students of color who have disabilities. Don't tell me before every meeting that I need to center the experiences of our black and brown students when every decision that the district has made, especially when it comes to special education, is hurting and failing these kids. Say it's about money, because it is. It's cheaper to yank out supports for these kids in the name of inclusion. Pat yourselves on the back and congratulate yourselves for how inclusive you're being, rather than adequately staff our schools and serve our kids. PPS, you should be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
That concludes general public comment.
Great. Um, thank you again, everyone, for comments tonight, and please feel free to connect with our senior board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specific, um, who's sitting right over here, uh, if you have something specific you want to follow up on with the board or the board office. Uh, next up, uh, we have President Bonilla from the Portland Association of Teachers, uh, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, I apologize for not being able to make it in person, it's been one of those days, so. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Roseanne Powell and Kara Bradshaw for setting this up so that I could show up and speak. Um, so, uh, first, as always, I'd like to start with appreciations. Um, today, we had our contract administration meeting, which is where the district and the union come together to talk about issues that we see that might be widespread, that impact the administration of our contract. Um, and we got through our entire agenda today, as well as had, um, almost every member of our human relations, uh, or human resources labor relations team sending up follow-up emails on different topics, um, on the same day. So I just want to appreciate that responsiveness, um, and the work that they are doing and our educators are doing and getting some of these issues, um, that we've been dealing with for some, for multiple school years, actually resolved. So that was really awesome. Um, I'm also really excited, uh, for our contract negotiations tomorrow. Um, PAT, we are looking forward to bringing some educators to speak to their experiences in buildings and finish presenting our initial proposal around Article Nine, which is student discipline and safety. Um, as educators, we believe that every student deserves a classroom environment where they can learn and thrive, particularly our special education students who face such unique and varied challenges. We've had two special education community coalition meetings where we heard from specialists, general, and general educators, um, parents, guardians, former board members, uh, lawyers who work, uh, around special education law, PAT leadership. And as the educator you just heard from, uh, noted, many of them were sharing their concerns around, um, the lack of access to a proper education for their students, um, and their children. Uh, and the district pushed towards inclusion, which has not yet been defined or declared. It's just the whispers our educators are hearing and parents are hearing. Um, I also know that the district has been sending out a survey with every individualized education plan that is completed to families, asking them around, uh, asking them for their opinion around language that would, uh, lead to a more, um, inclusive environment for our students, uh, without any kind of conversation with the union or, uh, educators around what that would actually look like or mean. Um, we believe that we are bargaining right now over two very pressing issues facing our district. What do we do about the sharp rise in safety and behavior issues across PPS? And how do we best meet the needs of our special education students? So we're asking for six different things. We're asking for credible and consistent data collection. For five years, we've been struggling to get PPS to collect and publish accurate data on student discipline. Um, and so until we can see those numbers that haven't been, uh, you know, massaged, manipulated, changed through, uh, you know, the inputting or not inputting of referrals that educators provide, it's very difficult to have an honest conversation about how to support students who are struggling. Um, we're also looking for district-wide standards and having those standards equitably applied. I think several, um, folks have talked about that for different situations here, um, in the public comment. Uh, you know, PPS is a patchwork of different approaches addressing student behavior and we need to make sure that we have, um, the same approach that is flexible, that can incorporate and encompass the needs of all of our students in all of our schools and that we're making sure that we have those common standards and they're being applied consistently for our students. Um, we also need adequate staff and space to provide that full continuum, that full spectrum of student supports. Um, as that one parent discussed, her child was able to feel and be successful when she was able to go to a social emotional classroom. And so we know that even students with behavior issues, uh, may need different types of support to be successful. That doesn't necessarily mean special ed, but we need to be prepared to provide students the spaces and staffing necessary to give each student the supports that they need, that are tailored to those individual needs. Um, we have heard too many stories of, of students having a really hard time at school and needing more support and having to have those, uh, difficult moments in public, in the hallway, in the main office, in places where the stigma of their needs increases and it leads to, as that, uh, former educator, that the previous educator discussed, leads to that stigmatization, um, causing them to no longer want to come to school. And school should be a place that everyone feels they belong. We also believe that special education placements have to be determined by students, families and educators. Our students, our families, our frontline educators are really in the best position to identify the classroom environment that will help our special education students thrive. And we need to make sure that PPS continues to have these individualized learning environments in schools, especially in those sites that don't exist. And we also want to make sure that we have these, uh, district-wide environmental safety standards, right? We know that the district has a plan, um, a multi-year, about decade-long plan around, um, updating our buildings, but no one should have to work in a classroom without heat or electricity or where mold and rat droppings are following the air, right? We shouldn't have classrooms where we have more students allowed than, you know, is reasonably safe. We, we need to make sure that even though we are incrementally bettering these spaces. We need to make sure that even though we are incrementally bettering these spaces, that the kids shouldn't suffer as we try to solve these problems. Students and educators deserve better. And then lastly, we just want to make sure that as a district, we're complying with our active shooter protocols, right? Like, it's already scary enough. We've seen so much gun violence in our neighborhoods and our communities. And when our students have to walk through an active shooter drill, it's even more upsetting when we as educators can't follow the steps that we're telling kids are necessary to keep them safe. We need to make sure that our classrooms have doors that lock from the inside, that we have blinds that actually work and that can close, and that every classroom or space where students or educators might be have a phone or a two-way radio or some way to communicate with the front office. So, this is all to say that, you know, I'm really looking forward to continuing this conversation with PPS leaders. And we know that our educators and our kids do well if they can, and that through our bargain, we can make sure we create the environment that allows everyone to succeed. So, thank you for the time, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone tomorrow during our bargain.
Thank you, President Bonilla. Appreciate you being here.
Of course.
Okay, next up on our agenda, the Portland Federation of School Professionals has requested to speak this evening, and I believe President Batten is here, oh, virtually, as well. Great. Welcome. I think we had President Batten a moment ago. There we go.
Can you hear me? It doesn't look like you can see me yet.
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm Michelle Batten, B-A-T-T-E-N, President of PFSP, the union representing classified employees at Portland Public Schools. Last month, I came to you sharing concerns regarding staffing, safety, and the workload issues of the employees I represent. I also shared statistics outlining the disparate treatment of my workforce, both in equity and in gender. We are now midway through November, and the issues have not been resolved. In fact, the situation is more urgent. Staffing shortages abound, and daily there are significant injuries to my members and the others who support our students. This week alone, I'm working with three members who have sustained concussions and other injuries, arising from students with needs that can't be supported. If these staffing shortages are to be resolved, employees must feel they are valued by their employer, Portland Public Schools, and they do not. You, the school board and superintendent, must revisit how you show respect to these diverse employees who support your most vulnerable students and all the others who help this school district run every day. Do you pay them a livable wage? Do you provide them a safe working environment? Do you offer relief to their untenable workload? Sadly, by your lack of support to these loyal employees, your answer is obviously no. From the first day an employee is hired, the betrayal begins. Oh, by the way, you won't be getting any breaks, maybe a lunch here and there, even though your contract and the law require them. We're really short-staffed, so you're covering three times as many students as we said you would when we hired you. You haven't had any safety training yet, and you may not even know who your supervisor is, but welcome to PPS. There isn't a shortage of people willing to work. They are just not willing to work here for these wages, sustaining these injuries with no respite in sight. Please work with and listen to the groups who represent your employees. We're not doing this work for fame and glory. We're here because we value our members, your employees. We value those who support our students and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, President Batten. We appreciate you being here tonight. Ms. Bratchler, I think that's it for testimony tonight. Great. We are moving on to the Student Representatives Report. Student Representative McMahan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, I just want to start off my report with the resolution and obviously what we have on this month, which is the National Native American Indian Heritage Month. I was hoping that some of the members from our Native Student Union from Cleveland would be able to join us, but unfortunately, due to the glaring burden of college applications, biology tests, and a French project, they were unable to make it tonight. But I would love to share some celebrations from their group that they wanted to come forward. A lot of times, Native students are looked at as something in the past and are not really recognized for the current work of community service, social justice, and equity that they push forward every day within their schools. Cleveland High School, recently our NSU, has been able to get the nine flags of the federally-recognized tribes here in Oregon, though they do not encompass the non-federally-recognized tribes, which still provide so much cultural benefit and insight to our students and to many students within Portland Public Schools are members of. These flags go to represent the history of these nations who have continuously strived to ensure that their cultural legacy is not forgotten and that their students are taken care of. And it's really the work and the dedication to community service that continues this tradition and allows for our Native students to thrive within our schools. And so, I just want to really highlight the work of those individuals who continue every day. We obviously had some of them in this room earlier. And the students, that despite the trauma of coming to a school building and living in a world in which has not been kind to them or their cultural identity, that they continue to fight for what's right. And I think it's important to appreciate that students are really the lifeblood of our institution, and it's their work and their energy that is the reason we are here today and that we have successes as a group, that we can move forward together and be better. And so, it's just their celebrations, and thank you so much to all the Native Student Unions across PPS who work to ensure that those legacies are not forgotten and that students remain successful within the PPS buildings. Then, moving on to some good news, recently I was able to go watch the Cleveland Play. It was Zombie Prom this year. It was a musical. It was very good, and I think it just goes to highlight the amazing arts education that we have in our buildings and also the dedication of our teachers. Our theater director at Cleveland is half-time, but the students went on to say in the final show that I was able to watch that these educators are so committed, that even if they're part-time, that even if they don't have all the resources or the props or the budget that they need to put on these shows, they really put in the effort to ensure that students find their place within the arts and that they're able to explore that passion and share that with the rest of the school community. And I love going to our band recitals and our plays because sometimes it's underappreciated, but it's so amazing the work that those people put in to make it happen. And that happens across the district, not just at my school play. And also, at Benson High School, CTE students or classes are going on field trips to meet industry leaders and to learn from those who know it best. And I think it really goes to show the depth of education and the importance of CTE education in our classrooms. And I think it's so great that students really get that depth of knowledge. And then, I save my commentary on just the second resolution, which is about our school psychologists. I just want to call it out specifically that it's so important, and I think we had some individuals from our community up here just talking about the challenges. And it is so much emotional labor. It is so tricky. And I want to say that despite all of the terrible conditions that we've already heard about tonight, that our educators decide to stay with us, and it's really the commitment to their students that they do. Like, they put their students' well-being over everything else. And they continue to do that despite the degradation to their own personal life, to their family life, to even, as we see like back, to their bodies, to their own selves. And it's that dedication that is so inspiring, and as a student who knows the ins and outs of school, I go almost every day. And it's really seeing that passion and that dedication, because I feel that work. I am in school. I feel the benefits of the work that you put in, and I know the challenges. And I do not have separation from that. So, I appreciate the work that you all put into making sure that students are safe, that students are cared for, and that students feel loved and can really go into school and have that education that they should be guaranteed. So, on that note, thank you, and that concludes my student comment.
Thank you, Representative McMahan. Next up on our agenda, Board Committee and Conference Reports. I will just open it up. If any board members have updates on the committee work that is going on, now would be the time to bring them forward. Director Brimadwards.
Sure, I have two reports. First, the Levy Committee met, and the Levy provides more than $100 million annually for our schools, based on current law. We had presentations about options to adjust the rate and also about the five election dates that we have, that we potentially could look to for a referral and talked about the pros and cons and ranked them. As a committee, also based on current law and the discussion we had about the rate and the impacts of changing the rate, we made a decision that we would not be recommending a rate change at this time and that there's some work that will shift over to the Intergovernmental Committee to look at whether if there's either a statutory or constitutional change that could be, that should be considered before we go out for a local option. And then, the other just report I have is the, I'm the Board Liaison for the Climate Crisis Response Committee. They had their first meeting. As you all know, we voted to install nine community members, including two students. Earlier tonight, we approved the chair. They had a great launch of their committee and, I think, in the process of getting organized and already talking about sort of how they want to frame up their oversight and then ultimately their report to the board at the end of the year. It was a great discussion, and I think they'll be happy to hear that there is potentially going to be a discussion in the Facilities and Operations Committee about Benson that came up as a topic. And so, they'll be interested in that, had a lot of questions related to that. Also, just the other notable thing is there was a sort of a showcase of a new tool for the greenhouse gas inventory and how it would be measured that is going to be a great way for all of us to see sort of the type of, sort of where we stand now and the progress we're going to make. And it can be used in a number of different ways. It will be a great graphic for us and a way to visually see the progress we're making.
Thank you.
I have a really brief conference report, and I'm going to leave early. I'm not feeling very well. But I want to share out, Director Green and I, through School Board Partners fellowships, had a chance to visit the Alex Haley Farm, just outside of Knoxville, Tennessee. And it's an important location because it was the site of the Clinton 12-integrated Tennessee schools in 1956, I believe. And the integration process was met with terrific violence from the KKK and others in the community. Alex Haley bought this farm as a writer's retreat and died a little bit too early, and the Children's Defense Fund ended up buying the property. They were able to salvage it. There was a golf course planned after Alex Haley died, and their financing fell through. Marion Wright Edelman envisioned a place where the well-being of, the education well-being of children was first and foremost. And so, our conference was made up of school board members from around the country in this place that envisions a world where kids are thriving. And the focus of the conference was people, power, and professionalization. So, really advocating for school board members to get additional training, like, the necessary trainings to use our power to change the way kids and students in this country are educated. Specifically, school board, they created many of the racist policies and discriminatory policies that we see today over the last 50 to 60 years, and it's on us to dismantle those. So, I'll leave it at that. It was a wonderful place to be. There are over 400 works of art from, donated by a former professor of African Studies. And then, Maya Lynn has two buildings on that property chapel that's built after Noah's Ark and a library that represents African-American authors. It has a beautiful little children's area.
Thank you.
We have an Intergovernmental Committee meeting on the 21st, so everyone should have received our draft legislative agenda. So, I would really love to hear back from everyone. If you have input on that or just save it for the meeting, join us at the meeting. So, that's important. I want to hear from everybody on that, because then it will come to the board on December 6th. Is that correct? 13th? Okay. And then, just the other committee is the Jefferson Comprehensive Planning Committee has been meeting, and we need to see how it shakes out, but as at this point, our final meeting has been canceled and it will just be a town hall, which is occurring on Wednesday. So, please put the word out, encourage people far and wide to come to the town hall. These town halls have been decently well-attended up to this point. But I encourage everybody to sort of queue into this process, because that's going to be coming to the board. That's December 6th, isn't it? Jefferson is the 6th. So, it's the 13th also? Okay. So, December, in December. So, there were some materials presented at the last Facilities and Operations Committee meeting, but it's going to be really important for everybody to sort of check into that process, because we're going to be asked to approve a master plan. And it was actually presented at the Facilities Committee meeting that there's a lot of room after the master planning process to make all sorts of changes to, you know, major details. And of course, that's true, because it's just the beginning of the formal design process. But I would really caution everyone that although that's what was represented, that has not always been the case. And, you know, we just had the recent example of, you know, not providing athletic space for Lincoln student athletes because it wasn't specifically earmarked in the master plan, and there was an unwillingness to go back and address that. So, I think it's on us to make sure that if you have, you know, doubts or questions or things that you don't see specifically called out, even given that we're sort of in the conceptual level, let it be known. Because that's the beginning of the winnowing process that happens during design. So, tell everybody to come to our town hall on Wednesday. Also, students, the community outreach has been pretty impressive in that process, including student-led. Did you go to Taze?
I did.
You did?
I was the only one.
Yeah, I was out of town, but they did a great job putting it on, and they did a great outreach. And so, really trying to find people where they are and let everybody know what's going on with that process.
Great, thank you. Are there more committee updates?
Well, I have just one from Facilities and Operations Committee. In reference to Director Constance, we had a report on the Jefferson Master Plan update. They have kind of decided on two options, two design options. One is, of course, a rebuild on the south end of the property. And the other one is, of course, remodeling the existing structure. And the engagement piece has been outstanding for the Jefferson site. The engagement piece has, you know, when I hear from the community, they feel very inclusive. They are hearing from different, hearing from different folks, from alumni to current students, that how this engagement process has been gone. So, I definitely want to make sure we give kudos to our engagement folks, that they have done an outstanding job with this process. And like Director Constance said, this is only the beginning. You know, this is only the beginning. There's going to be a lot more when it comes to the design piece as well. And also, I know we're supposed to be getting an update on the Jeff modernization, I mean, Jeff Master Plan at the next Facilities and Operations meeting. So, I encourage every board member to be at that meeting, because the next one in December will be voting on that. So, I'll invite- the next one in December will be voting on that. So invite everyone to come so they can get a more in-depth understanding of that. We talked about the budget savings from Lincoln High School. And when we talked about the saving piece, we looked at the overall savings that we're possibly getting from not just the Lincoln piece, but from the budget savings from Kellogg, budget savings at McDaniels, and to look at what we can do as a whole with all of the dollars versus just one. And we're looking to have that number around September of 2023. And I am in support with you as far as, you know, and I've let the team know that, you know, we have not invested in our athletics over the last $2 billion worth of bonds. And so I would want to look at what all those savings are and looking at what we can put into athletics, even if it's a small portion. You know, if we have to start phases in some of those properties, maybe we can't do the whole thing. Maybe we just do part of it or do some of it here and do some of it there. But it is definitely something that we're going to be looking at. Hopefully, we'll be looking at next year as far as those dollars. And then the, we had a Harriet Tubman update, which is actually some great news. I had got a call right before the last Facility Operations Committee that the Kairos Board had agreed to preliminary arrangements to co-locate Tubman and Kairos in the co-located building at the Humboldt Site. So that was some great news. So now we're going to be looking at, walking down that path of citing Tubman where the Kairos building is. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Hollins. Director DePass, I know you're not feeling well, so I'm actually, want to make sure you can get out of here. I would like to move one of our agenda items forward, which is Resolution 6616. And so if it's okay with the board, we're going to move on to that item next. This is a settlement agreement with four disconstruction that was removed from the consent agenda. And I'm asking if there's a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6616.
So moved.
Second.
Director Lowry moves and Vice Chair Hollins seconds. Is there any board discussion about this before we vote?
So I wanted to make one quick comment on that. I know we had got briefed on it before and I know everybody knows where I stand at. I probably would be a no vote on this for a couple reasons. One, I know in the construction industry that I partake in as well, that when we looked at this law that was, we knew it was coming. And so for me, you know, when we started doing our budgeting for construction sites, we, even though we didn't know if it was going to pass or not, we added it into our estimates. And it'd be, for me, it'd be hard pressed to think that a company that would have not done that, knowing that this was coming on the table. So that's me.
Any further board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on this item?
No.
Great. The board will now vote on Resolution 6616 settlement agreement. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
No. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6616 is approved by a vote of four to two with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Director DePass, thank you for staying for that. I appreciate that. Moving back to where we left off, apologies for just a second. Superintendent Guerrero, I think we are moving on to the appointment of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Community Advisory Committee.
Sure. And I'm going to remind directors in our community a little bit more about this item. And while I'm doing that, I'm going to ask two of our RESJ team members to come down just for moral support. Lydia Gomboa and Will Fernandez. So in 2021, Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill 732, requires each school district to convene an Educational Equity Advisory Committee. We're calling it our RESJ Community Advisory Committee. It specifies certain committee responsibilities, this legislation, and specific membership selection requirements. So this bill requires the committee, and this is straight from the bill, that the committee will advise school district boards about the educational equity impacts of policy decisions and that it will advise the school district superintendent about the educational equity impacts of policy decisions as well. See, it'll inform the school district board and school district superintendent when a situation arises in a school of the district that negatively impacts underrepresented students and advising the board and superintendent on how best to handle that situation. This bill gives, or the legislation now, it gives district superintendents the responsibility for coordinating the member nomination process and in proposing approved finalists to the school district board, which we're doing this evening. In August, the board approved an initial slate, if you'll recall, of committee members with a plan to do further community outreach, which has been done for parents, staff, and additional teacher positions on the committee once the school year was underway. So after a robust outreach and selection process, 12 members have been selected from over 50 applications for the board's consideration this evening. And I want to recognize that Directors DePass and Brim Edwards participated on the selection committee as well. So the team is here to take any questions if you have them.
Director Brim Edwards, any thoughts? Anything to add?
Well, because I participate in the process, I don't have any questions. I think we have, we had an outstanding group of applicants. I mean, it was really hard to narrow it down. So hopefully we'll find other ways to utilize the talents and expertise of those who aren't on the committee, but we, I think, have an excellent slate to recommend to the board.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'd just love to just say one quick thing about this. Dani LaDesma, also, I worked with her in terms of looking at the student side and students that would be appointed to the board. And I just wanted to shout out that one of the students that has been appointed is actually also a district student council representative. So it's really great to see kind of that intersection of leadership and also see that students of color really being represented within our leadership in multiple different ways. So I just thought that was great to see.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6617?
So move.
Second.
Director Constance moves, Director Brim Edwards seconds. Is there any additional board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6617, approving the Racial Equity and Social Justice Community Advisory Committee Charter Committee members. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
And any abstentions? So Resolution 6617 is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. This is great.
I just want to say thanks to everybody who's willing to serve and being willing to engage and volunteer your time for the good of our students. So thank you very much to the whole entire group that we've just approved. It's exciting.
I want to say the same thing. We're looking forward to working with this new committee. Thank you to the RESJ team and Senior Director LaDesma for shepherding the process and for our board's participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Next up, we have a first reading of policy rescissions. Chair Lowry?
Policy Committee Chair Lowry, just to be clear. I'm not taking over from you tonight. You have in your packet the staff report about these rescissions. The Policy Committee is continuing to do the work of improving our policies, refining them. And staff is going through to look at things that just no longer fit our practices or things that we cover in other places. And so both of the policies before you tonight are either not in alignment with our values or are things that we don't do any longer. And so we're just, those are before you tonight. We'll be voting on them after the 21-day comment period.
Thank you, Director Lowry. The policies proposed to be rescinded will be posted on the board website and the public comment period is a minimum of 21 days. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy. The board will hold a second reading of these policies on December 13th, 2022. And I probably should have asked if the board had any questions for Policy Chair Lowry before reading that last part.
I'm ready. I was going to eat cake, but instead I'm ready.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we will again, hold a second reading of these policies on December 13th. And moving on to the next item, which is a resolution to approve the appointment of a Metro Policy Advisory Committee member. Metro Policy Advisory Committee, also known as MPAC, established by the Metro Charter in 1992. Metro is the regional government, for those of you who don't know, advises the Metro Council on a range of topics including regional transportation planning, management of the urban growth boundary, protection of lands for natural resources, future urban or other uses, and other growth management and land use planning matters required by state law or determined by the council to be a regional concern. Because all of these issues may be of concern to schools, school districts are represented by a voting position on MPAC. According to the committee bylaws, the member and alternate positions representing school districts are to be appointed jointly by the governing bodies of the school districts represented, which include Portland Public Schools. The member and alternate from the school boards in the metro region will be appointed jointly by the governing bodies of the school districts represented and must be from different districts. As part of this process, school boards were asked to submit nominations for the member and alternate position earlier this summer. Beaverton School District nominated Susan Greenberg for the member position. And Hillsborough School District nominated Mark Watson for the alternate position, which we are being asked to approve by resolution. And I will just note here that, I think as most people know, but in case you don't, I am the deputy COO at Metro, and so I will be recusing myself tonight from voting since the MPAC actually advises Metro. It doesn't feel super great to vote on someone who's going to be advising me. So I will be abstaining from tonight's vote. With that, do I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6618?
So moved.
Second.
Director Constance moves and Vice Chair Hollins seconds. Is there any board discussion? Student Representative McMahon?
Just again, thankful for those who are willing to volunteer and serve our community.
Thank you very much. And no public comment, Ms. Bradshaw?
No.
All right. The board will now vote on Resolution 6618 to approve the appointment of a Metro Policy Advisory Committee member. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
And I, as I mentioned, will be abstaining from tonight's vote. Resolution 6618 is approved by a vote of four to zero with one abstention and Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Next up, annual report on the student investment account. Superintendent Guerrero?
Yes, Chair. Well, this is exciting. Each year, the state of Oregon requires districts to provide an annual report on how the student investment account, SIA dollars, were invested during the last school year. So tonight, we're going to take the opportunity to share with you and the community how we're aligning those investments to our strategic plan, because after all, that's our roadmap. So we know that our strategic plan is our blueprint to create the necessary conditions, we like to think, to meet our board goals, and accelerating achievement for students of color in particular, and continue working at eliminating persistent gaps, using our board goals as our North Star. So we want to introduce tonight, while we have attention on this, to talk a bit more about our PPS strategic plan, how we're monitoring our progress internally, which we're sharing with board and public along the way. So here to present this evening is our Chief of Staff, former Forbes 30 Under 30, Jonathan Garcia.
Good evening, directors. So, okay. Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff. We'll get started here. The quality and stability of our district are rooted in good long-term planning, trust, and community partnerships. This is why we brought our community and organization partners together to define a comprehensive shared vision, PPS reimagined, and to develop the strategic plan that guides us. Along the way, we have clear student academic achievement, student goals that you all voted and approved that enables us to measure our progress. At the very heart of our plan is our graduate portrait. Together, we pledge that Portland Public Schools will graduate compassionate, critical thinkers who are able to collaborate and solve problems and lead a more socially just world. Together, we pledge to send our student voices and our shared commitment to racial equity and social justice and doing right by Black, Native American, and students of color. I want to bring those shared commitments to the front of our minds as we consider our student investment account investments this evening, both those we've made and those we will make going forward. I'm especially proud to introduce the dashboard, which will keep our parents, students, staff, community partners, and of course, you, our school board directors, updated on our team and management's progress towards an educational ecosystem steeped in racial equity and academic achievement. Now, you know as well as I do that our student investment account dollars are just one piece of our funding puzzle. Our federal and state partners have provided several distinct funding sources, but seeing them as distinct would not be strategic, and it would not be in service of our shared commitment to racial equity and academic excellence. So we have worked quite intentionally to maximize those investments by aligning them. As you might recall from this last, this past spring, we've categorized our investments into five categories: addressing unfinished learning, increasing learning opportunities, providing high-quality emotional, mental health, and wraparound supports, creating more time for educators to plan, collaborate, and prepare, and obviously make meaningful progress on our community's top priorities. Of course, some of our funding also supports, or some of our funding supports our PK-12 operations. You can see here how we're aligning resources to disrupt underachievement and accelerate equitable student learning. We've made significant investments in professional development so that our educators and school leaders receive the training they need to better teach and support all of our kids. And as we emerge from distance learning and face a world filled with significant social, economic, and environmental pressures, we continue to make direct student services and support a top priority. This includes investing in new learning support staff to target specific student groups needing learning acceleration. It includes culturally-specific services. It includes whole child support, like increased investments in mental and behavioral health, counseling, and social work. And it includes meeting our students where they are and offering diverse pathways to academic growth and achievement. And at the heart of our learning spaces are trusted adults, educators, coaches, counselors, mental health support professionals, and community partners. These people are catalysts for the change we seek. The Student Investment Act has helped fund over 200 of these invaluable team members to support our work towards racial equity and academic excellence. Our external partners have buoyed this investment to go even further on behalf of our students of color. But our collective work has not been without challenges. The district submitted the first student investment account plan in March of 2020, and you certainly know the series of unprecedented and compounding challenges that followed. While we received much less money than we've anticipated, we anticipated receiving, the student investment account funds were received, helped respond to and offset many hurdles while making incremental progress towards racial equity and academic excellence. We had to plan, to adjust our plan to address our emergency reprioritization of funds to respond to the immediate challenges we faced. Another challenge to note is that we delayed, that the delayed year two grant agreements disproportionately impacted the charter school and community-based education organizations' ability to implement their plans. And their plans were delayed as a result. This story of dreams deferred by the pandemic is not unique to Portland. I'm extremely proud of how everyone at PPS weathered the story, and I'm proud of how quickly, once we returned to some normalcy, we've made the space to reprioritize our progress towards racial equity and academic excellence. So what does that look like in practice? Our commitment to long-term planning includes careful prioritization, making sure we're laser-focused on what we must accomplish now so that we can build on those accomplishments moving forward. You're aware that our strategic plan identified 22 strategic outcomes and 63 goals. We cannot lose sight of those, but working on all of those simultaneously would mean we're working on everything and nothing at the same time. And so we're zeroing in on the nine most pressing strategic outcomes: transforming structures for racial equity, cultivating a culture of racial equity and care, planning for the Center for Black Student Excellence. You can see how these align with each other and with our focus on racial equity and social and academic excellence. Academic excellence is also furthered by the development and implementation of an integrated instructional framework and by implementing our multi-tier systems of support. And we're also striving to develop a diverse, high-quality and thriving workforce here at PPS. We're socializing our vision and our strategic plan. We're establishing a system-wide project management culture and practice. And we're embedding our system data-driven continuous improvement practices across the district. And you can see how these nine outcomes map neatly to our five strategic priorities for this school year alone. In these priorities, you get a tangible sense of how we are aligning our resources, whether they come from our student investment account or from the money you approve in our budgets towards racial equity and academic excellence. We are implementing a new instructional framework and a new curriculum that rigorous and standards-based across our schools. We're keeping our promise to voters that our curriculum will be comprehensive, culturally responsive, and current. We're working to get all students We're working to get all students, and especially our Black, Native American, and other students of color, the support they need for high-quality learning. This includes investing in new learning support staff to target specific student groups needing learning acceleration. It includes expansion of career technical education and the arts. It includes whole-child support, like increased investments in mental and behavioral health, counseling, and social work. To balance his attention to high-quality learning supporting our educators, to balance his attention to high-quality learning, supporting our educators to deliver high-quality teaching is important. We're doing this through significant investments in professional development, and obviously notably, much with our ESAR dollars. We continue to revitalize our physical spaces, and we're working to create inspiring and joyful learning environments that rise to meet the demands of our changing climate. And we're doing all this with attention to our organizational culture. We're working to create a culture that is always, always in service of our children and youth. And we want to be completely open about, with our community about our progress. Collectively, you, me, and our educators, our superintendent, our central office leaders, we all work hard to build back the community's trust in our district, and we aim to sustain that. That's why I'm proud to share with you tonight our new public-facing dashboard, which will keep our community updated on our progress towards our priorities. This is still in early development, and will continue to expand and refine what is included. Dr. Renard Adams, who could not be with us here tonight, and his team in Systems Performance, is managing this effort as part of our focus to be data-driven and focus on system being at a top performance. Where we have encountered an obstacle that has slowed us down, we will share. Where we're succeeding in meeting our goals, we want to celebrate that with our community as well. This is all in service of aligning our student investment account investments, planning, and reporting with the implementation of Forward Together and the board goals. This includes bolstering progress monitoring and evaluation tools and practices that provide deeper insights, all as part of our continuous improvement system. We want to leverage the investments over time to achieve the district's priorities, and we will get there faster by inviting our community into the process. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Chief Garcia. At this point, we'll open it up for any board questions or discussion.
I've been looking forward to this. I look forward to actually getting into the dashboard and seeing it. Are we going to be able to do something like that for our ESAR dollars as well?
Say more.
Or are we planning to? Just a dashboard about how we have made the investment and whether we can... No, Veraton knows this is my favorite subject.
Yeah, and I think you're referring to two important questions. How do we make transparent and visible to the community how we've invested those dollars? And then, secondly, how do we share with them the progress we're making, leveraging all of our revenues towards our organizational goals?
Right, and specifically, how have we connected those investments to our goals?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do.
From a technical perspective, showing a dashboard, we have not moved along those lines, but we do submit our quarterly reports to ODE. We're working to update our website. It's static, it's not as fancy. This has been priority to focus on our strategic plan, and there's been conversations on how to create the connection to not just ESAR, but like, what is the overall budget linked to that? And so it's conversations we've had, but we don't have any specific, like, concrete plans to be able to have a budgeted dashboard.
I just, I'm interested on two levels. One, because I think it's important to be able to convey to the community what we're doing with that infusion of funds, and then, two, looking ahead to when we know, when we don't have them anymore. We need to have a really clear way to see which of those investments really had a high impact, because that's, we're gonna have to carry that into our next budget process and say, we were able to do these demonstration projects, we were able to experiment with some strategies that we haven't had the resources to support in the past, what really, really worked for kids, and how do we find the money to keep doing it?
That's especially true when you see the slide with all the strategic investments, how we've been able to really push that agenda forward, whether it's work in the high schools, supports in our media schools, whether it's arts expansion, et cetera. You see the list here, the counselors, the family supports, the mental health. We would be in a very different situation if we didn't have the capacity of all these folks post-pandemic right now.
And I'll just second what Director Konstant said. I don't think we need a fancy, interactive dashboard. I do think a simple but clear, you know, two-pager that we can present during the budget process that really says, you know, here are the dollars you received, here's what we spent on, and then connect them, as the superintendent just mentioned, you know, to results, to, you know, to achievement, is gonna be really important as we talk to the community. So I appreciate you continuing to bring up that issue, Director Konstant. I think it's important, so. Additional questions?
I don't really have any question, maybe just a... Well, I do have a question, but it's in more process. I have my... Sorry, I'm speaking softly tonight. So I'm curious, these investments were made without the benefit of knowing what had happened during the pandemic? Because we didn't have, we didn't have a cycle of student...
Bring in Leslie Odell here, our Senior Director of Federal and State Programs. Am I getting that title right?
Can you hear me? I couldn't hear you back there.
Oh, it's just, if this is the look-back report, correct?
Yes.
So these were investments we made without full sort of visibility to what had happened with our students during the pandemic, because we didn't have full baseline data.
Correct. So our first year, if you'll remember, we, that's when the pandemic happened, and we had our funding significantly cut. This is a look-back on last year as we were responding to what we anticipated was going to be where our needs were, and so...
Right. So when we get to the next year's budget cycle, it'll be informed by what we know happened with students?
And, and, oh, sorry.
This year.
Yeah. And the layer to that is part of the integrated grant guidance as well. So overall, at the state level, there is an effort to not just take SIA, but a few other funding streams, High School Success Act, which is Measure 98, and start, so this was like the first cycle, and now, as we've progressed through it, how do we start building for the next four years?
And to say that this, the integrated grant guidance is really, it's modeling itself off of the SIA process, and they're still working out the kinks there at ODE as they're dealing with what, you know, we're dealing with. But again, this is the annual report process, which we anticipate we will keep, but it'll be broader with all of the grants, not exclusively SIA.
So as you can imagine how cumbersome it is for districts to have to respond to each of these individually, and the feedback, and I'm glad that we have a way to report how we braid it all into this integrated plan, which is exactly what we're talking about here. How do we leverage all our available resources to power our strategic plan, for lack of a better word?
Yeah, it'd be interesting, I guess, whether we are gonna benchmark it all against what other districts did and what sort of they found in their first year, and last year of funding, and sort of what worked and what didn't. Is there, is there an effort to do that at all at this, like, at the COSA level, or to...
Well, just, you know, off the cuff, I'll let Leslie talk, but we all saw Sback results a couple of weeks ago across the state.
Our local MESD has a consortium, and then ODE is working with all of the ESDs across to actually compile this information and really see, you know, we're really early in this, so what are the results as they, as those investments continue? That is the, that's the intent in the, of these reports, actually. So, great, so they'll all, at some point, get...
Mm-hmm. That'd be great, because it'd just be interesting to see what, what other strategies the other districts utilized and what sort of results they got. And then my...
Can I just say one comment? I mean, I think, I think that's right, and we're excited to be able to compare, if you will, and learn best practices. I would just highlight, you know, based on just information that we've seen, again, you know, we could tell, what's interesting about what you see in front of you is that a lot of these were decided on pre-pandemic, right? When we went out to our community and had, you know, robust engagement, we heard the need for high-quality emotional, mental health, and wraparound supports. I mean, everything you see on this list, you know, and as you, as you go post-pandemic, right, or during and after the pandemic, these still apply, right? And so, and they've been amplified, and I think we have an opportunity, one, to share our best learnings, you know, as well, and then learn from, from other districts.
Yeah, it's interesting, because it's a pretty good list. The only thing is I, because I was, I'd forgotten it was made before, because I was like, it's missing acceleration, but that's about the only thing that's missing. So I had just one other question, and if we're gonna have a discussion at a different time about the strategic plan and the dashboard, I could ask it then, but...
Oh, I think now's the time.
Now's the time, okay. So I was looking at the strategic plan and the dashboard, and I can't really tell, like, on some of them, it's assessing the progress, and it has a number, like 8% or 14% or 1%. But I can't tell it's, how the, what, because, because there's not a smart number. I'm trying to figure out how you, how you picked a number, or what's that based on? Is there sort of a data pack behind it, or...
Yeah, there is, and I think one of the things that we, that I recognize coming into this meeting is obviously not having Dr. Adams here, whose team is running the backend. I can share, share with you that our project management office, alongside our system performance team, are gathering that data, so there are inputs that are going in to determine whether, you know, what the status of each are. One of the documents that we'll send, and I think one of, one of the outcomes of this is we're gonna have a one-pager that kind of provides some explanation, you know, for folks to have access to, that includes, for example, you know, what each status, you know, means. So what is on-track, some disruption, major disruptions mean? So, you know, I think as we roll this out, we wanted to just make sure that it was one of those, oh, we all knew what this all means, because we've been in the work, but now making sure that the public knows what these all mean. So you'll start to see iterations of that here in the next few weeks, coming out of Dr. Adams's office.
Yeah, I say, just as a layperson looking at it, I'd want to know, like, where are we trying to get, and what does it mean to be 8% down the road? It may be, like, wow, we've made great progress, or maybe, oh, that's kind of slow, but it's... So having, I guess, bringing forward some of the context would be useful, but I...
Additional comments or thoughts?
As we, this is great, as we head into the budget process, will we have that so that we can see, like, based on the investments we have, we've made, not just with these dollars, but other dollars, you know, here's the type of progress we made, and if we, you know, dialed up or dialed down, you know, what, being able to look at what, how that might impact our progress, is that what we'll do in the, have access to in the budget process?
Well, I think what's tough is you want sort of an add-value coefficient for each of these factors at a particular site. I wish it were that easy and that clean. I think it's the combination of things in certain school communities, in conversation with those school communities around their needs. But we do think there's a set of high-leverage strategies, and we're hearing schools say, we've seen the difference that it's made over here, we have a pocket of need here as well. I know we were having this conversation last night and last week. So we're, we want to head that direction, and we want the best information we can get. We'll certainly have our mid-year growth data as well, so that'll be another indicator. We'll try to heat map that, or we'll leave it to Dr. Adams to do some magic with, but we're also interested, knowing that resources are likely gonna get more constrained, so which of these are really making a difference.
So is this dashboard, it's not just for the SIA, it's for, it's...
All, everything strategic plan, correct.
All the braided strands.
Yes, all the braided strands.
Okay.
And Superintendent, what I, what I think I heard you say, because I think it's a really important point, you know, disaggregating to like this particular program, having an impact is gonna be tough. What we are doing, though, is we have an overall strategy, you know, strategic plan, connected to our board goals, which is intended to achieve those. And I think maybe picking up, I'm not sure this is what Director Bremmer was saying, but, but it sounded a little bit similar to, how do we, as we go into this budget process, talk really clearly about the decisions we're making and the impact that'll have on student achievement, and the student achievement that we've laid out in our board goals? And I think that, you know, whenever we're in a potential cut year, which we expect this year may very well be, I think having those conversations is really important, that, you know, if we, you know, you're gonna propose a budget, and I think as part of that budget, I would be really interested in you saying, you know, look, given our resources, given constraints, or, you know, maybe Phil Knight decides to, you know, donate some money to education in Portland, but either way, to really sort of say, according to the board goals, this is what you think you can achieve. And then, as we go through our budget process and as a board makes some decisions, having, you know, also a discussion about whether that will, you know, potentially increase student achievement, or in some cases, may even take away from it, depending on the priorities, I think is gonna be a really important part of the conversation.
I agreed, and if somebody has a connection, I'd love to make the sales pitch there about the work we're doing here in PPS. I, I think, from my seat anyways, as superintendent, you know, trying to play my part in leading district improvement, any superintendent's first task is get schools off state accountability lists, right? Like, that's the first thing we want to make sure to do. I think we've made progress there with 15 school communities coming off that state accountability list, but for me, that's not enough. We've got to maintain continued progress in those schools. They're still not at the level we want them to be, but how do we start to orient to the other pockets of student groups that exist across the school portfolio, which we talked about last night? But more importantly, how do we start to develop that heat map of how schools are doing towards the board goals, right? So I think Director Holland's really was making this point. So that'll be an interesting list to really look at and then say, well, is it math over here? So the learning specialist you want to assign there, the professional development you want to do in that particular campus, might be different from another one that's more working on third-grade literacy, where the reading goals aren't where we want them to be for student groups. So the application of strategies there might look more tailored and customized to that. So this is, this is where it gets fun with the Moneyball of it all, when you have limited pie to try to spread it out and be really targeted about those investments, which, as you know, is my unfinished dissertation.
It's an interesting evolution, because, you know, when we first were making decisions about this differentiated staffing, to have all those schools designated by the state sort of released us from having to create our own structure, or to determine how we were going to make those decisions. Now that we've worked ourselves out of that situation, it's our invitation to just be more thoughtful, and how do we have the resources follow the students and the services follow the students in a little bit more nuanced way?
Thank you very much for the presentation, really appreciate it. With that, is there any other business?
I'm just gonna have a statement for the record on Resolution 6616.
Was that the settlement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I may also, I may also have a statement for the record on, on that as well. Thank you very much. Any other business? We are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on December 13th. The meeting is adjourned.